Testing, testing. Val, can you hear me?
Hi, Steve.
Hello, how are you?
Good, good. I just signed that emergency proclamation, so Cindy's bringing it back over to the office.
Okay.
We have a quorum, Chair Horseman. I've got Supervisor Fowler on the phone and I've got Supervisor Vice Chair Vasquez here as well as you. And I know I just spoke to Judy not that long ago and she was trying to join by phone, so she may join shortly.
Very good. Yeah, I know she's having problems with joining, so.
Yeah.
All righty, very good. Well, thank you. And do we have all the staff members we're going to need for this board meeting?
Can you tell me who's in the... I'm in my car. I just got out of the dentist, so I don't have a...
I... Sorry.
I'm on, Chair. Lucinda, listen, I'm on.
All right.
Is Andy on?
Not yet, Steve. Oh, there he is. He's on. He's here.
Madam Chair, before we call the meeting to an end, I just want to... I would like to ask Andy to present and read into the record the staff report for the county. And then Lucinda will read the staff report for the Flood Control District for the sake of the record, if you don't mind.
We need to start the meeting, though, and everything first.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just doing it in preparation for...
Well, I'm going to turn it over to you as soon as we get this thing opened, so. All right, very good. All right, thank you, and good morning, everyone. It's another rainy day. We are happy for the monsoons, but we also know that this is causing difficulties for many of our communities and certainly our thoughts are with you all as we all work together to get through this and to proceed with mitigation. So, and at this point, we have a special board meeting on Tuesday, July 26, with a very limited purpose. At this point, before we go forward on this, I would like to go ahead and do a call to order and ask those board members that are with us to identify that they're present. So I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Herona Mavazquez.
Hello. Hi, good morning, good afternoon, not morning anymore. Good afternoon, everyone. Herona Mavazquez, Supervisor District 2, Vice Chair.
Very good, thank you. And District 3, are you with us? Actually, I think Matt Ryan has indicated that he's not able to join us, however, I know he's had communication with Lindsay. District 4, are you with us? Supervisor Begay, are you with us? Supervisor Begay, I know is having some technical difficulties. Hopefully she'll be able to join us soon. And District 5, Supervisor Fowler, are you with us? Supervisor Fowler, you're on mute. It looks like you're on the phone.
All right, I just realized I have to do star six, Madam Chair. Hello, Madam Chair and everyone else. I am out by phone today and I won't be able to see any presentations. I'll view them later, but anyway, I am here, Madam Chair, District 5 Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler for joining us by phone. So Lindsay, we have three board members. I believe we do, in fact, have a quorum. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair Horseman. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And members of the board and members of the public, our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask those that can to please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I know Lindsay Daly, the clerk of the board, is going to put on the flag, so we'll all have a flag on our screen. Or not. Well, here it comes. There we go. Thank you, Lindsay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation
A nation.
Under God
Under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, members of the public and the board. And we appreciate, again, everyone's attendance here for this special meeting this afternoon. I know we have, as I said, two items, and pursuant to the request of the county manager, we're going to start off on our first item with Deputy County Manager Andy Bertelson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you for having this meeting today. It is indeed created through emergency situations, and we faced several emergencies here in the last few months. So with that, I'm going to speak to the General Fund Transfer from the Coconino County General Fund Emergency Reserve Fund to the Coconino County Flood Control District. This item is for consideration of possible action to approve the transfer of funds of $5 million as a loan from the county's General Fund Emergency Reserve to the Flood Control District to address the ongoing cost for flood response and mitigation in the Schultz Pipeline and West Pipeline flood areas. The costs are a direct result of post-wildfire flooding from the Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline wildfire burn scars. Approving this transfer allows the Flood Control District to manage these post-wildfire flows. The recommended motion, the recommendation from the county manager, is to approve the transfer of these funds in the amount of $5 million as a loan from the General Fund, the Emergency Reserve General Fund, to the Flood Control District to address these ongoing costs for flood response. Note that on July 15, 2022, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors declared a local emergency due to post-fire flooding caused by a recent pipeline and tunnel fires of 2022. And the burn scars also overlapped the Schultz burn scar area from 2010. So our emergency management efforts date back to that time. The rainfall over the burn scars will continue through the monsoon seasons and for monsoon seasons for many years. In fact, we are monitoring that rain event today and flows created by those rain events as we have this meeting and as we speak today over these burn scars. The impact of post-wildfire flooding to the local communities is severe and repetitive. And it creates a need for flash flood warnings issued by the National Weather Service and shelter-in-place emergency notifications to the public. And that began on June 25, 2022, and continuing, and we've issued those warnings today. We are in warning as we speak. It is requested that the $5 million be transferred as a loan from the County Emergency Reserve General Fund to the Flood Control District to address the ongoing cost for flood response and mitigation. The costs are a direct result of post-wildfire flooding from the Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline wildfire burn areas. So that concludes our presentation and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for this loan from the General Fund to the Flood Control District.
Just a note, Chair Horseman, Supervisor Begay has joined the meeting for record of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon Supervisor Begay. Glad you were able to join us as well. We are on item number one, and we've just received an update from Deputy County Manager on the consideration of possible action to approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $5 million as a loan from the General Fund Emergency Reserve to the Flood Control District to address the ongoing cost for flood response, both in the mitigation for Pipeline Schultz and West Pipeline flood areas. And obviously, the costs that we're talking about are directly associated with the post-wildfire flooding from Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline. So thank you for that update, Deputy County Manager. Deputy County Manager Lucinda Andriani, do you have anything else to add?
Why don't we... If you want to go ahead and take this action and then I'll... For the Flood Control District action, I will go ahead and read the sections that won't be duplicative, read the staff report. But then I also have really pertinent information that I need to share with you about why this is so critical.
Very good. So, members of the board, are there any questions or comments members of the board would like to make at this time? I would just very quickly, and then I'll turn this over to my colleagues. Number one, I did just moments ago, in fact, sign another emergency declaration because of the post-fire flooding that is occurring in our neighborhoods and the great devastation, which, of course, we've seen, you know, on the front page of the paper this morning. Not to mention, many of us who have traveled out to the neighborhoods and seen this in person, as well as many of us who live in these areas, who are experiencing inconvenience and devastation and damage to their homes and neighborhoods, at least their property, I should say, really, and neighborhoods. So at this point, rather than going into a deficit, I think it is important and is prudent financial management for the county when we are seeing we're going to run short on funds, that we do approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $5 million. Please note, this is a loan from the General Fund to the Flood Control District, again, to assess the costs associated with this post-wildfire flooding. So I am definitely in favor of it. I think it's in great need for our communities. And in order to handle the health and safety risks for our communities, we need to consider this. I would also like to make a note that this really shows the cost to our community, not just the devastation and the emotional cost and toll on our communities, but quite frankly, the cost and toll on our local government, on our county government. You know, this is why we really need to address forest restoration and forest management, because the cost of mitigation will bankrupt Coconino County and probably bankrupt the state of Arizona. And so we really do need to concentrate our efforts with all due speed and work with the federal government and Forest Service and our other partners to do the forest restoration and mitigation necessary, so we do not have these devastating wildfires and the devastating post-wildfire flooding. So I'm in support of this, but and I think we need to do this for our community, and I think it's with some caution and trepidation that we need to do this and go into our general fund. So, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm also in support of this. Right now, we're seeing how much these efforts are costing, and I think it's really important that folks understand that, you know, we're floating these costs now with the hope that we will get support, both federal and state, to help with the cost. And so right now is a time where we just got to batten down the hatches and ride the wave and get through this monsoon season the best we can. And so I think this is a smart fiscal move to help cover these costs that these repeated flooding events are causing in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You can hear me, right?
Yes, we hear you fine. Yes.
I do have a question. This is a loan, so what is the timeline and what is it going to be used for? It sounds like Lucinda will be covering that in the next section, but what is the timeline when we're saying this is a loan?
Madam Chair, this is Steve.
Yes, County Manager.
The terms of the loan are still being discussed based on cash flow as well as the, you know, the needs of the County General Fund. Our CFO, Sarah Malaney, is on the call as well. But Madam Chair, the terms of the loan will be brought back to the board in a future meeting within the next month.
Very good. I know this is kind of is emergency right now. Yeah. Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Excellent question. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Begay.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I've been on the phone for an hour, so. Times kind of got to me. Listen, I just wanted to know further details, but, you know, I guess it's going to be coming to the board at a later time, but I think it's important that, you know, we try to do whatever we can. If it's an emergency, it's an emergency, and that, you know, we need to address, you know, whatever is in the best interest of the county. So I just want to say thank you for doing the presentation, you know, as far as what our needs are. And I just, like I said, I support this item.
Thank you very much Supervisor Begay. Members of the board, any other comments or questions? And if not, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $5 million as a loan from the General Fund Emergency Reserve to the Flood Control District to address the ongoing cost for flood response and mitigation in both the Schultz Pipeline and West Pipeline flood areas. Obviously, the costs are a direct result of the post-wildfire flooding from our past wildfires. Do I have a motion to that effect?
A motion that we approve.
And I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Supervisor Begay. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Any names? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And members, now, we need to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Supervisor Begay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
By Vice Chair Vasquez. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Members of the Board of Directors, we are now the Flood Control District Board. At this time, we have a second item, consideration of possible action to transfer funds in the amount of $5 million as a loan from the General Emergency Funds to the Flood Control District, same authorization and use of the funds as we just took action on. And with that, County Manager, I understand you'd like me to turn this over to Deputy County Manager and Flood Control District Director Lucinda Andriani.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Lucinda, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Lucinda Andriani, Flood Control District Administrator. And I'll go ahead and read the sections here to not duplicate the earlier action, but consideration of possible action to accept a transfer of funds in the amount of $5 million as a loan from the General Fund Emergency Reserve to the Flood Control District and authorize the funds to be spent on ongoing cost for flood response and mitigation in the Schultz Pipeline and West Pipeline flood areas. The costs are a direct result of the post-wildfire flooding from Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline wildfire burn scars. And the recommended motion is accept a transfer of funds in the amount of $5 million as a loan from the General Fund Emergency Reserve to the Flood Control District and authorize the funds to be spent on ongoing cost for flood response and mitigation in the Schultz Pipeline and West Pipeline flood areas. The costs are a direct result of the post-wildfire flooding from Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline wildfire burn scars. And I think quite a bit of the rest is very similar to the prior action. So, but I wanted to share some of the information that I'm sure, you know, that Board of Directors have questions about. And I know you've been tracking this. We've been marching through this series of flood events. You know, I think you're all aware, we've already issued, and I don't think this includes today, where we've already issued alerts. We've already issued 16 emergency alerts this season. We began with a major flood event on Sunday, June 26. And this is all largely a result of the Schultz wildfire, as well as the Pipeline wildfire, Pipeline having burned 27,000 acres and impacted nine watersheds. All... Two of those had not... One had very limited burn from Schultz, and one had no burn from Schultz, the Schultz Creek watershed. We've had, to date, you know, again, major flooding events. The first major event hit Rupaki Trails. They are flooding again today. They've now probably had upwards of four to five major flood events hit that area. The first major event was three feet. Then there was another event on, I believe it was Sunday, July 15. There was four feet of flooding through that area. feet of flooding through that area. The first flooder resulted in significant interior flooding to one home there. They had sandbagged, it overtopped the sandbags. We now have Jersey barrier there. So far, since the barriers have been installed, we haven't had any interior flooding there. I think we've had two other homes with interior flooding. One that did not have mitigation, one that had limited mitigation, but the mitigation is, is again proving why it's so important to have sandbags barriers in this area. And so we're, you know, seeing significant flows, largely impacting to date the government tank, Wupaki Trails Lennox, the Copeland watershed, as well as most recently, the Paintbrush watershed, which is flooding again today, as well as one flood event in the Schultz Creek area into West Flagstaff this last weekend. Those, those flood events on government tank, which again have also been significant and repetitive, are flooding into, all the way into Doni Park, and we're seeing significant impacts there from ponding and floodwater in that area. What we are seeing now above the, the neighborhoods on forest is that the, any natural alluvial fans that we had there that were spreading out the water, helping it to slow down, capturing debris and sediment are now unraveling. And a great example of that was the flood event on Copeland on July 15th, where it completely unraveled the lower fan. And this dam was a natural fan, this was not restored after Schultz as a result of a decline of the mitigation by those people living in that area. But it flooded significantly intense rainfall that day. And as a result, very large boulders, one foot to six foot floated into the neighborhood, rumbled and floated into the neighborhood and created very significant impacts through that Copeland, North Copeland, Copeland area. Again, we've had 16 emergency alerts in this season so far. Where are the costs going? A large extent of the cost initially, costs were spent to prepare the mitigation that had been constructed after Schultz, which has performed exceptionally well until these latest set of fires, particularly the pipeline fire. Frankly, in, in all the watersheds that we mitigated, other than Brandis with the 2018 thousand year rainfall event, we had not seen any water in the neighborhood since then. The mitigation has worked exceptionally well, continues to work really well, unfortunately, except for Wupaki Trails where the, the volume of water is just massively greater than what it was even in Schultz, where they experienced 10 flood events in that first year in 2010. And they're on the path probably to do that or exceed that again this year, unfortunately. So we spent a lot of effort trying to get all the channels ready for flooding, those on-force measures teed up, everything ready. So there was a, a significant amount of cost getting ready for what we knew would occur. Then, we then also, of course, began construct, producing sandbags. To date, we've produced over 400,000 sandbags and gotten those transported to the neighborhoods. We are also supporting operations at both, I don't know that the Kingman Prison has actually started producing yet, they're supposed to this week, but they haven't been producing at Winslow Prison, but we're stocking up materials, both sandbags and sand. And we're very fortunate here in Flagstaff, we have a source of sand from Landscape Connections that's provided to us at a very reasonable cost. Unfortunately, those other areas of sand is much more expensive. Didn't understand that sand is a hot commodity in Arizona these days. We need upwards of another half a million sandbags into the area to, to meet the needs that have been identified by our engineering teams for the area to conduct the mitigation. We're closing in on at least five miles of barrier that have been placed to date. A whole nother set of barrier was placed again this weekend after the weekend events. And, and then we're continuing to have to address flooding impacts to the mitigation, both on and off forests, cleaning out channels. Wupaki Trails, there is a restored fan above the neighborhood there. To date, we have removed seven feet of sediment and debris off of that fan so that it can continue to capture that rather than that impacting the neighborhood down below. We're also covering the cost, of course, of placing sandbags at those that are elderly and disabled. We've also are, have been investing in the gauge system and managing the flood director system, which is the monitoring system that goes on to ensure that the emergency alerts are issued in a timely fashion. So a lot of costs involved. To date, you know, I would just say overall that I would expect, having gone through the Schultz effort, that, that the cost this year will rival or exceed that cost. The first year cost for Schultz was upwards of five and a half to six million dollars in response cost. And we will probably again rival that, given, you know, inflation and the level of impacts that we're seeing. And frankly, another issue is the lack of local resources. For example, very few people have gone into the conservation corps, and we utilize that resource significantly back in all the prior flood events, Museum Schultz slide, they've been very important resource. So in terms of the reimbursement, so right now, in terms of the overarching costs, since we began the flooding, our burn rate is probably in the ballpark of about 750,000 per week. And we're estimating to date that we have spent two and a half to three million dollars in, in mitigation and response. Some of those costs will be eligible for reimbursement. Nothing prior to the state declaration will be eligible for reimbursement via DEMA and FEMA, the Department of Emergency Management and, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Some of those costs will be eligible since that declaration by the state. And, but very importantly, we did secure through the Natural Resources Conservation Service USDA NRCS exigency funding, and we, for both sandbags as well as barrier. And we will be eligible for 75% of the costs that were submitted up to about, we, we are getting some additional technical, uh, technical, what's called technical assistance funds as well to cover the engineering that supported the development of those mitigation measures. And which total, the total amount from NRCS or the total amount of the grant is 2.8 million, up to two, we get 75% of, of 2.2 million potentially to be reimbursed, again solely for sandbag and barrier, not for any of the other work that's being ta- underway. The Department of Forest Re- and Fire, Fire Management has indicated, actually today, that they will reimburse us for some portion of the National Guard costs that, that are costs is, we have 60 individuals, well, we've had a various numbers of National Guard, Guardspersons here working, producing sandbags. And at $25,000 a day, they've agreed to a certain level of reimbursement for two weeks of their deployment. So that was some good news, at least we'll get some of those costs reimbursed, as well as reimbursement for purchasing some additional sandbags, $125,000 worth of sandbags. And so those are the, the, the areas where the agencies that we're working with on reimbursement for the emergency mitigation measures, as well as the, of some of the other activities that we're, we're undertaking. And again, some of those costs will very likely not be eligible. We have already exhausted the non-forest restoration funds in the flood control district budget, or FY23, based upon that estimate of two and a half to three and a half million. We're getting pretty close to that. As you know, a significant component of the budget for 23 and, fiscal year 23 and going forward, has been identified by the board of directors to focus on forest restoration. So we don't continue to have to do this, as the chair noticed, noted prior. And thank you very much for noting that. This is still critical action that the district must move forward with, and we must ensure that those funds are there. The chair and our forest restoration director and myself recently met with US Forest Service Region Three, Regional Forester, Deputy Regional Forester, as well as the regional, local forester supervisors for Kiabab and Coconino, and expressed that, that the board has set aside these funds and how critical it is that they continue to work with us to complete the restoration on Bill Williams Mountain, as well as immediately undertake the restoration on the west side of the San Francisco Peaks. If this pipeline fire had burned to the west, if the winds had not reversed, and the level of deployment of firefighters, but frankly, primarily the winds had not reversed and blown, blown then to the east, we would be seeing unbelievable catastrophic flooding through Flagstaff right now. And so it's just critical that we get onto the forest as soon as possible. We're, we're asking to get on as soon as this fall to begin that, just, you know, very critical work that needs to get underway. We have a five-year plan, we know what to do, we have excellent partners in the Nature Conservancy and, and the National Forest Foundation to execute that work with us, and we're ready to go, and we want to get boots on the ground. So with that, we, this is why we need the loan transfer from the general fund to cover these costs, and again, to still be able to support that forest restoration work that again is so critical. And, you know, want to explain that we did this during Schultz as well, a much smaller loan was made out of the general fund. And there was a lot of conversation, it ultimately wasn't paid back until fiscal year was made in 10 and was not paid back until fiscal year 17. Part of that was that we were in the Great Recession, and part of that was we were able to secure a great deal of funding for the long-term mitigation, which I'll come back to in a minute here. So that will influence how much reimbursement do we get, how much funding do we get for long-term mitigation, which is still gonna be critical. And then, and again, at any point in time in the future, the board of direct, the board of supervisors can decide to forego that loan, you know, if the general fund is in good shape and the board can, to choose to forego it. That is a policy decision that the board, board of supervisors can make at a future date. And so, given what the needs are, both for short-term, long-term mitigation, flood mitigation, and then forest restoration, because again, we just can't keep doing this over and over. So, so again, we, I talked about the forest restoration, how key that is, and, and how we need to stay steadfast on that plan and get the boots on the ground as quickly as we can. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know certainly people are probably also wondering, what are we doing relative to long-term mitigation? We have begun a process with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, for long, potential long-term flood mitigation projects on private property. So this is downstream between, you know, private property, not on the Forest Service lands, that funding does not cover on forest watershed restoration. But it's important to understand, there's three components to long-term mitigation. One is the on-forest watershed restoration. Next is flood mitigation through the neighborhoods to safely convey any water still coming off the forest through the neighborhood safely. And then third, very critically, is upsizing the infrastructure at Highway 89 and Highway 180, so that, that water can, and pass, that water can pass through the, that infrastructure of the highway and not damage or undermine that highway. The Highway 89 is already being under, beginning to be undermined in a couple of locations. And it's critical that we secure those emergency relief funds from Department of Transportation. So that's the three buckets we need. Forest Service funding to help with on-forest watershed restoration, which is the game changer, that's critical. Seeing that once again play out through all these flood events and on museum where we just completed that work. And mitigation through the neighborhoods through NRCS. And then third piece is Department of Transportation upsizing that mitigation and likely downstream that detention as well, working with DOT and ADOT. So we're working on that, we're, the plan right now is to submit application to NRCS for three of the, three watersheds, the most immediate that we could, that frankly, we have plans already in place that came out of Schultz work that we did, that we can immediately begin to move forward with, and then work with NRCS, another application within 60 days for government tank and for Schultz Creek as well. Schultz Creek, the district will focus on the on-forest measures. The city will focus on any measures downstream of the on-forest measures. So they'll work likely with NRCS on those measures. So that gives you a snapshot of what's going to be needed longer term. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, that's a lot, lot of information to take in, and thank you to our flood control director. We know it's just been an ongoing effort by so many people in Coconino County, quite frankly. And, you know, first of all, we just have to extend, you know, our great, once again, our, our great gratitude for so many people that have answered the call when emergencies strike, and we've had more than our share, and we really appreciate your efforts, and quite frankly, our, our county, other county managers and the rest of our staff's effort, everybody is just working overtime on this. And it, it's so much appreciated, especially in our community, when we go out and we talk to the neighbors and we see some of the tragedy and we, we see the damage that's been done, and yet they are so complimentary to the efforts that are being made here by the county and, and, and by the city, and trying to do what we can to protect our community from these, these, Mother Nature, it's Mother Nature events, and we really, really appreciate that. I, I gotta say one thing too, it's gotta be over 400,000 sandbags. And we, we, both Vice Chair and I have been out to the sandbag sites quite a few times. We want to specifically thank Flagstaff Fire Summit, Highland Fire, National Guard, AmeriCorps, Conservation Corps, the Indigenous Corps from Hopi and Zuni, Phoenix Fire, Mayor Gallego came up and brought some of our Phoenix firefighters, as well as the individuals from our community that have answered the call, and the voluntary calls from United Way. And it has been, and certainly all calls out, and they have certainly been working very, very hard on these sandbags, and we have seen them in action, and it's, it's pretty amazing. And just a, a thanks to everyone who has taken part in this incredible effort to help members here in our community. And, and then the second thing I, I want to talk about is the, the response we have received, a federal response, you know, Representative O'Halloran, I think he was up as always, you know, within 24 hours of an emergency striking Coconino County, there he is, as well as both of our senators' staff have been here, and I know the senators also want to take a look, but their staff has been here and said, what can we do to help? And I think you've done a good job of identifying what we need with Forest Service monies for on-forest And I think you've done a good job of identifying what we need uh with Forest Service uh monies uh for on-forest mitigation uh NRCS to help with the flood mitigation through the neighborhoods. And then we have to work with ADOT and the Department of Transportation on the upsizing of those uh culverts there for one-eighty and eighty-nine. So uh, and, and it really has been, we've had a tremendous amount of support coming and uh, you know, just also want to mention the City of Flag. I mean, why, why the uh Coconino County has been primarily working on the east side and dealing with the up uh stream, if you will, mitigation efforts that affect both the east and the west side. The City of Flagstaff has certainly done uh an incredible job to answer the call of the neighborhoods uh even on the west side. Uh, and you can see, uh, we need to get forest restoration done. We've seen from both of the fires, both tunnel and pipeline, when it hit areas that had been restored, had been mitigated, there, thinning had taken place. It in fact, um, it in fact worked. So we, we need to do that to continue to protect our neighborhoods because at, if we, all we do is answer to the emergency mitigation efforts, we're going to run out of money. Uh, as you can see, we've run out of money. We're now making a loan to the uh flood control district. So uh, it's uh really important uh that we have the monies available to do the matching we need for the monies that are coming in from four-fry monies that are coming in from the federal government under the infrastructure bill, that we have the monies available to, we can max it out so that we can do our forest restoration work. So uh, thank you for reminding us, and we just have to keep our eye on the prize, and that is really forest, forest restoration uh to really, really address the mitigation necessary to protect our communities. Um, those are my thoughts. Other comments or questions from members of the board?
Vice Chair Vasquez?
Yeah, first off, I just want to start by saying thank you to all the different partners that have been, really come out uh of the woodwork to support us, you know. We were out there yesterday and we got to see, or Sunday, excuse me, days have gone fast. Uh, we got, we got to see uh Flag Fire, Phoenix Fire Department, um, the National Guard, uh Ancestral Lands and AmeriCorps, and the City of Flagstaff, all different, different groups, different efforts putting in, putting in work to help support our communities. And so, you know, I just want to say thank you, and, and I also want to thank, say thank you to the community for their patience, because I know that these are trying times, and I know there are times where we feel or you may feel like, like the county's not addressing your issues. We're spread out super thin and we're getting to it as best we can. So please be patient. Uh, thank you for your patience ahead of time, but just know that once we can, we will get to, to your needs uh a- as best we can. And, and uh the thing that, that to me, every time I go out to the area and look at the, the different areas that have been flooded, is just how spread out and how many different areas we're talking about. You know, last year when we dealt with floods with the museum flood, floods, there was just one watershed and one real trajectory for the flooding. Now we have like six different watersheds that we're dealing with all at different times that, that are, that are getting hit. And, and a couple of times, multiple watersheds getting hit at the same time. And, and so uh, just know that we're doing the best we can, and, and each time we're, we're bringing in mitigation the best we can to prepare for the next. But again, as I said earlier, we really just need to, you know, hold on for the ride and, and survive this season, get through it, and, and then make our plan for those shovel-ready projects that we can do that to make a huge difference. You know, I, I think if we can get those, those ready to go and then start identifying the other projects that we can do, you know, that, that the new areas that weren't affected from Schultz to the same degree that they are now, like government tank, then I think we, we have a chance of, of um uh help mitigating this over the long term, and so that, that each year, we're not dealing with this over and over again, because this, this is rough. And the, the, the idea of ha- possibly having to do this for multiple years, i- is we're gonna go, as a county, we're gonna go bankrupt, and our staff is not going to be able to to withstand doing this over and over again. So we have to be proactive, and that's where the fire uh forest fire, uh forest restoration projects are so important. And, and why it's so important that we band together and, and really find ways to, to get the federal funding, to get those projects, both on-forest, through the easements, through the community, and finally where the water will, will finally be uh detained or retained. And so, you know, again, I just, I want to say thank you to everybody that's been working hard, our staff that's been out there, you know, going full bore. I mean, the sandbags, when we were out there a couple of weeks ago, they were already going through six weeks of sandbags. So we're probably looking at seven weeks now. Um, then, and on top of that, you think tunnel was in April and, and, you know, our, our, our county staff and, and our partners have gone non-stop since then. So you know, i- i- if we're, we're doing the best we can and we're getting as much as we can, as we can. And if you're not getting the services you feel you need, please contact us so we can get, get on, on the list of areas we need, need to address. So, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, and, and that's good to remind people. The call center is open and available, so if there's uh needs, questions, et cetera, the members of our public, uh, you know, please avail yourself to the call center. So, uh, other questions or comments from our supervisors? Or our, our directors, I should say. Uh, Lindsay, did you have a, a comment?
Thank you, Chair Horseman. Uh, Director Matt Ryan couldn't be here today, but he does have a comment that he would like read from him for the meeting today. If it's okay if I read it?
Sure, absolutely. Obviously, he's not voting, but yes, please read his comment.
Thank you. Um, Director Matt Ryan has written, "I will continue to support the levy increase. I will continue to encourage scrutiny in terms of efficiency. We cannot accommodate all desires and so must be focused. I fully support our proactive mitigation efforts and forest restoration as a preventative measure truly needed and must be a part of our budgeting. I also believe we need long-term strategies to be inclusive, including developing a broader, long-term program to eventually create a program that is strategic and inclusive. With that, we balance science and investment." Thank you.
Thank you, uh Lindsay, and appreciate the comments of uh our su- uh Director Ryan. So, other comments or questions from the directors? See none? If there are no, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Fowler, or Director Fowler?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for um, for all the reports uh and just everyone that is involved and helping out. And I know that our staff are um non-stop. I'm really concerned about that. Um, we're already short staffed. So I guess my, my, my comment, Madam Chair, will be to really um look at um how we address this into the future. I'd like to know if the EOC is open. Um, the flood district does not have, doesn't have staff, so are they using our department's uh staff to address the um, continue this work that is on, on the ground? And how much of that is, when we talk about strategic plan, I believe that we need to do that. And this five million dollars, how much is there other ways being directed to this um effort? Um, it is a very important effort. However, we um, as a county supervisor and as a county, we have to also protect our internally, um, internal staff, that we need to inter- um really look at our own budget uh and see how um it is being distributed. Uh, and I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm supportive of the loan, but I think we have to look internally to find out I, how our staff are being um assigned to this effort right now. And we already were told about the burnout. We're already told about the short staff. Um, and, you know, unexpectedly, people, um, staff end up going on leave because of family situations or, or their own personal health. And so now we have this going on, and I'm just wondering how much of that is gonna be um, that is impacting our internal um operation. I don't really expect that um, the answer right now. I think that, that that's gonna come in the next presentation. Um, I think we need a full understanding from a budget, from the staff, from the contracts, who are all the contractors that are on the ground that's doing this work now? I know that we just approved the um, the, the ongoing contracts for various, the same, it's always, it's just a batch, about maybe five contractors, huge contractors that are in town. We just renew them all the time. Uh, and, you know, that's where I still question, you know, the um, the the diversity of that, of the contractors. And I, Lucinda has explained that, you know, um something about um state approved, and I, I think we need to really look at that. There's a bigger picture I think we need to look at and um, and how we address this. And then also, what we are doing for the neighborhoods. Um, how can we sustain this for this particular um community, this particular neighborhood? What if this happened somewhere else, like Winslow or um even in my district somewhere? And if down in the um Forest Lake area, if it were to happen, or even in Sedona, would we be doing the same thing down there? And would we, we already set a precedent, so we're gonna have to respond in the same way there. So how do we do this uh on a countywide? And then the flood district is a countywide flood district. What are we um setting up? Um, putting on hold to be able to do this? Public Works is always assigned there, it seems like. Uh, maybe wrong, but staff are being directed there. What, what projects are on hold for them to take this on? So these are questions that I have, and I have a whole lot more. But I would just like to just bring those up, and I don't expect an answer right now. I think we need to approve this and um address the issues that have been brought up. And we look at um, we'll um, and continue to do the work, but at the si- same time, we need to really critically look at the situation that is at hand and how we are up, how we are addressing it, right down to the details and the numbers and um, and that's what I think we should do, to be able to understand where exactly we are financially, staff-wise, contracting-wise, and all our plans. And then from there, and say, this is how we're gonna move forward. This happened, this happened, this happened, and this happened, and now we're gonna move forward. And if there's another fire, like, oh, well, it's not gonna happen, but on the west side, then what? Well, those are things that we need to really look at. I think when we say we need to take a critical strategic look, I think that's what we have, we're talking about. So thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank all of our staff and our county manager and all the community for coming in and really helping out. And um, so that, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, thank you Supervisor Bagay. And yes, you bring up important questions, and of course, when a emergency hits and an emergency happens, uh, and our community is suffering, we need to do what we can as local government to assist. And you bring up very good questions. And I know uh County Manager um Steve Peru has some comments.
Oh, Madam Chair, uh, maybe we could defer to Supervisor Bagay before I, I make my comment. I think, I thought I saw her.
Okay, Supervisor Bagay, I'm sorry. Uh, please.
Uh, yes, um, my comments are short. Um, I think um, I just want to thank everyone up front, you know, who's been out there helping and um all our staff and, you know, community members, uh, people that live um in the, in the homes in that area, and everybody that's been involved. And I just want to say thank you for your efforts in that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a thing that is um, affects everyone. And so I just want to make sure that um, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we address the emergency as it arises. And certainly, um, what um Lena said, uh Supervisor Fowler said is, is true. And I think, you know, uh, we always say it's the whole county that we need to look at and stuff like that, but we have a big county and and um, I, I also have some of those questions that she's asked, so we can probably um say those at a later time, you know, as getting answers. But um, I just want to say thank you um to my colleagues also for running around out there too. And so it takes, it takes the community, you know, everyone that's involved, all the way down to the state and federal level. And thanks again to the staff there, Lucinda, and then I'll see, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh Supervisor Bagay. Um, County Manager?
Um, Madam Chair, uh, uh, appreciate the information, and of course, the comments are very uh informative, and, and to us, we want to be able to provide a full accounting of all investments, staff time, et cetera. What the staff will be doing, the deputy managers and myself, we will be making appointments with each board member to have an individual conversation to tease out all of the questions that each of you have relative to our uh investments, our response, um, all of the staffing, all the contracting. And, and what we want to do is assemble with, through our conversations, develop a very in-depth um list of information that will be presented to the entire board in a, in a, in a meeting uh sometime in August. And so I do want to assure board members that uh, that we will be providing all this information uh to the board so that there is, of course, a, a broad uh awareness uh of, of, of how we are managing uh, of course, this event uh through our, uh, through our county, the flood control district, uh, the emergency management group, of course, is important, our public works team. Uh, you know, I will say right now that uh, you know, we, we are re-prioritizing uh work uh based on, on critical need. And, and right now, uh, the, 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 the response to the residents is, is at the top of that list uh, uh, at this time, just given that we are in the season for monsoon and, and what's happening locally. Uh, at the same time, we know that we're a large county and uh, you know, other emergencies will break out in other parts of the county, and we will respond accordingly. Again, we're prioritizing it based on criticality, uh, impact to, to individuals, homes and lives uh and go from there. But I understand that we also need to be mindful of, of, of the fact that uh, we have a, a finite resource within the county, the staffing uh that, that goes to this, and of course, uh, the, the uh investments through, through revenues. And so, again, uh, rest assured to each board member here, and Supervisor Ryan is not here, that we will be providing uh, meeting with each of you to, to get all of the questions uh that you would have, uh, that you would want to see presented back to you at a board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, County Manager. And seeing the level of accounting and accountability necessary in order for a lot of these federal grants that we are part of, uh, and also to apply for federal granting, uh, there's no doubt that there is a pretty detailed um financial accounting process going on. Uh, and uh, we appreciate that. Appreciate the efforts of of, again, the staff and the staff time and uh, staff commitment in order to do that. So thank you, and we look forward to more information as we move forward. But and, and, and by the way, the board of supervisors, m- most of us, since we've been on this board for this term, have basically gone from uh, you know, an emergency after an emergency after an emergency. We've had four wildfires uh that we've been dealing with here as a county uh and numerous uh flooding, uh, and not to mention a pandemic. Uh, and so we understand that the health and safety of our community and addressing the needs and health and safety needs of our community certainly is paramount. And yet we have a county to run. And, and so I, again, want to thank uh, the, our county staff uh for the incredible commitment and dedication they have made uh to our, our communities and to help keep us safe and quite frankly, help keep this uh, our community going forward. Uh, you know, through, through it all, we've got a general election, and we've got a primary coming up. And it's Coconino County that is responsible for that. So, you know, there's a lot of roles that we play, a lot of hats that we wear. Uh, and, and of course, having to deal with the health and safety and needs of our community is paramount. So you know, thanks again to everyone. And unless there's some other comments to be made, at this time, I would entertain a motion uh to accept uh a motion for the transfer of funds in the amount of five million as a loan from the general fund emergency reserves to the flood control district and authorize the funds to be spent on ongoing costs for flood response and mitigation in the Schultz Pipeline and West Pipeline flood areas. And the costs are directly as a result of post-wildfire flooding from the Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline. from the Schultz Tunnel and Pipeline wildfire burn scars. Do I have a motion? Do I have board members?
I'm motion that we approve, approve this transfer.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez, do I have a second to this motion?
I'm waiting for Judy to motion, do a second, Madam Chair.
I believe Vice Chair, we have, we have a motion from Vice Chair, we do need a second.
And I will second, I will second, Madam Chair, I was waiting for Judy to do the second, thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor Fowler, appreciate the second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Begay, are you voting? All those object to the motion, signify by saying nay. We have no nays, it appears to be a unanimous. There you go.
I, 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 I was trying to unmute myself, I am an aye for the motion.
Thank you so much, we do have unanimous voting from all four supervisors present. Thank you so much. And with that, we are, the Flood Control District, right now, we need to resolve as the Board of Directors. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Vasquez, all those in favor of resolving as the Board of Supervisors, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
It is again unanimous, we are now the Board of Supervisors. And with that, members of the board, we may adjourn this special board meeting. And thank you all for taking time in your July, which is supposed to be board-free for this board meeting. It certainly was important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your support, thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.